I'd like to follow the General Committee on Public Safety. My priest rise for prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we pray in your name.
Ms. Lamoyne, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Boche, real conference.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Regan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. LeBoman.
Here.
Ms. Lamoyne.
Here.
Ms. Isar.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mr. Wong.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
We're going to item number two, the Presentation of the School Board Number Training Certificates for 2021. As you have in your folder right now, you're shooting your certificate that you completed the House and State Certificate. Vanity Powers. So, did a great job and we appreciate it. And, Ms. Alex Schneider.
And I just want to mention that as per legislation that was passed by our legislature several years ago, we have always done professional development, this board has, in many different venues and many different ways to keep up with the current educational practices and financing for state as it pertains to education. So each year, as every one of our board members participate in those professional learning activities, those are submitted to the Louisiana State School Board Association, who is the keeper of all of these professional development hours. And then at the end of the year, they send us the certificates saying that each one of you have completed the required amount. And many of you have exceeded that with the number of professional development hours. And we do put that in the official record of the school system and make that public for the community to see that our board members do keep up with all of the current educational trends and financing trends as it pertains to K-12 education and beyond. Everybody got all their professional development for the 2021 calendar year.
Thank God, yes. Thank you. Okay, move on to Education Committee, Ms. Lamoyne.
Thank you, Mr. England. Agenda item number 3.1 is the Teacher Recognition and Pipeline Initiative, and we have Ms. Alex Schneider here to present.
Evening, folks. Thank you for having me this afternoon. This evening, I'm excited to talk with you about some of the very unique and innovative ways that St. Bernard Parish School System has looked at teacher preparation and recruitment, thanks in great part to our partners in education, the Miro Foundation. And so we'll be getting to their partnership with us here in just a minute. But I'm going to walk you through a couple of our different preparation programs and our pipelines that we have put in place this past year. So, to give just a little bit of context, as you all know, the traditional preparation pipeline, maybe 10, 15 years ago, looked at a high school student being really eager to go to college to study education. And they would go to a university, let's say UNO or LSU, to study education. During their time at LSU, they would take the praxis. And upon graduation, they would graduate with a certificate to be eligible to teach at any one of our schools and having passed the praxis. And as you all very well know, this recruitment has been a big problem, not just for us locally or within the state of Louisiana, but nationally, as teacher recruitment and retention has been an issue that's come up across the entire nation. And I found these numbers released by the Louisiana Regents, which kind of elicit some of this issue, right? So this is enrollment in Louisiana traditional teacher preparation programs over the last 20 years. And you can see a decline in enrollment at all of our traditional teacher preparation programs. And so what this looks like is where some of our traditional teacher prep programs, we would go and get the vast majority of our teachers from every spring, we're finding that there are just not as many students who are enrolled in those programs. This has been coupled with some retention. And again, these are national issues that districts across the United States and even in other parts of the world are dealing with. But 60% of classroom teachers leave after 10 years, with 50% leaving within the first five. And one in three new teachers didn't make it out of COVID. And so because of this, St. Bernard Parish School System has really had to think about how we were going to grow our own educators to meet the demands of our own workforce and teach the future of our community. And so we thought about this in four different ways. And some of these, I'll be able to just kind of give you a high-level overview of these programs. I know Ms. Lamoyne works very closely with this, obviously Ms. Boche. As we discussed before, one of the ways that we really were able to intrigue students into the education profession previously was at the high school level. And so there, we have created our Pre-Educator Pathway, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a second. College, and this is a new program in partnership that we have been very excited, and one of the first in the state of Louisiana to be able to participate in, thanks to the Miro Foundation. And this is a partnership through Reach University. I'm going to get into that in just a moment. Praxis 240, as some of you know, one of the greatest barriers we do have to getting teachers certified. They might have a bachelor's degree, but they are not able to pass praxis. And again, through our partnership with the Miro Foundation, we have been able to provide 30-plus teachers in the last few months with tutoring services through Praxis 240, or Tutoring 240, excuse me, which has resulted in many candidates passing praxis when they had previously really struggled, including secondary math, which has been notoriously our most rigorous and challenging praxis exam. And then, of course, our Teach St. Bernard certification. So this kind of goes through each of the different components of a new pathway forward for our Grow Your Own program, as you can see. And so, as mentioned before, I'm just going to go over this briefly as Miss Ling LaBeuf, the CTE Coordinator, Melissa Moynihan is one of the instructors, Sophie Krug, Ms. Boche, Ms. Lamoyne worked very closely with this Pre-Educator Pathway. But this targets our current high school students, right? And so this gives us an opportunity to get students while they are at Shellman High, interested in the field. It's accessible to both jumpstart and top students. These are juniors and seniors. I know Ms. Lamoyne had an opportunity to speak with the class. I had the opportunity to go recruit that class. And they were able to really see what education looks like from the lens of a teacher. So outcomes for these students, they can earn both a basic or advanced credential. I was informed this afternoon that Bessie and Ms. Boche can likely speak to this a little bit more, has moved forward with partnership with the Nunez Community College for a fast-forward in their Associates in Science and Teaching through one through five. We have the Associates in Applied Science and Care and Development with Young Children, again through our partnership with Nunez Community College. And so this really targets at a very, you know, this is a long-term approach to teacher recruitment and retention. These are students who we are hoping to be able to kind of nurture through the next four or five years as they go through university and then come back to us. There was a recent study that showed somewhere in close to 70 to 80% of teachers in Louisiana teach within a 20-mile radius of their high school. And so it's really important that we get our own students to come back to us. They're also more likely to stay. One of the fun things that happened this year is we were able to take those students who are enrolled in this class and let them go observe both at Lacoste Elementary, Tris Middle School, and Andrew Jackson Middle School. So they spent a lot of time in classrooms. They attended the Teacher Leader Summit. They went to conventions, professional development at Nunez. And then they had high-profile meetings with state and local leaders. So this was a group who got a lot of exposure and a lot of experience within their year in our program. And then one of the other things we are very excited about is students will be able to take the praxis exam. And that is thanks in good part to our Superintendent, Ms. Boche, who really spearheaded this. But, you know, one of the major barriers we have, particularly with our hard-to-staff areas, math and science, is that these students, you know, leave and go and study something else, and they haven't seen calculus or pre-cal in quite some time. And so when they go to take these exams, they often aren't successful because they just haven't seen that content area. And we really had pushed for these students to be able to take those exams while they were in high school and had more familiarity with those things. So this is one of our new programs that started this year, again, thanks to the Miro Foundation. And this is our Grow Your Own Para-Educator Program. And so one of the things that we knew was that we had educators in our school buildings. These would be paraeducators, maybe substitute teachers, secretaries, who would make fantastic teachers but had not received their four-year university degree. And so we were really struggling with figuring out, how do we keep these? We need these people too, right? They help make our schools, you know, better places. And if you ask anyone who really is in charge of a school, they're going to tell you the school secretary. So we can't lose them. And so how do we keep them as our school secretary while also helping them move forward in their career? And so we have partnered with Reach University to do a bachelor's degree in education or a bachelor's degree in science, depending on their credits. And this, with the generosity of the Miro Foundation, is tuition-free. So this will be a fully-funded undergrad degree for those educators who are already within our school system. So these would be people who have taught with us. They do have to go through a recommendation process, through their principal and so on. But they will be reimbursed for that tuition through our partnership with the Miro Foundation. So I just want to say thank you very much. And we do have three of our four students with us this evening, and I'll introduce them in just a second. But these are our fantastic students who just finished their first semester at Reach. It's not easy. And these folks, you know, I've met with them several times. It's not easy to work all day. Many of them have kids at home and then come home and study. Some of their classes were at 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM because they're nationwide, so east coast to west coast. And it was really rigorous. And so I'm really proud of them. They just submitted their first round of report cards to us to be able to get the reimbursement. So it's a huge win, and we're excited to see you guys kind of grow in this. So we'll come back to that in just a minute. There's also a job-embedded component to this. So these are people who would have touch with students, whether that be in the classroom or through, you know, various different activities. And so that time is going to count as some of their student teaching. And then upon graduation, and this was the same with all of our kind of pipeline support programs, they have a two-year commitment to our school district. Okay, so then the second support, right? So another barrier was going to be praxis. And this program in particular targets candidates who have a degree but have not yet passed praxis. And this really is what our pipeline into Teach St. Bernard relies on. And so what ends up happening is we have a pool of candidates who are working towards praxis that would need that passing score to be able to get into our alternative certification program. And again, thanks to the Miro Foundation, we've been able to put 28 candidates so far through this tutoring program. We had one candidate that I have worked with for years. He's a former student. He has been trying so hard to pass secondary math for us, had tried four or five times, got on Tutoring 240, studied for 34 hours, and passed. And so that's a math teacher that's going to be at Shellman High School. You know, and we're so grateful that he was able to do that. And then finally, in your packets, I did realize we had not given you all an updated Teach St. Bernard manual in a bit, so I provided that for you all. But Teach St. Bernard is our, you know, one of our most successful teacher recruitment pipelines. This targets candidates who have a bachelor's degree and have passed praxis one and two. So this is an alternative certification with an outcome of them being eligible for a Level One teacher certification. And some of the highlights of this that we like to tout is, you know, this has been around for about eight years or so. We've had 148 teachers complete this program. As of this afternoon, 124 are still in the teaching profession. So when you think of those retention numbers that I earlier shared with you, this would be a little bit of an anomaly. And 103 of those teachers are still with us. So, you know, this is something that we are just very proud of as a program. I'm excited to work with them further this summer. We do have a bigger cohort coming in this summer. And we're excited to get them started on June 29th. And so I did want to just end with just a quick shout-out to the Miro Foundation and a thank you on behalf of the St. Bernard Parish School System. They've committed $50,000 over the next several years to fund those two teacher pathways. And, you know, without them, we would not be able to support these candidates through this process. And so we are very excited. I've had probably over 10 candidates very excited about going forward. They have to first get into the university, and then they have to apply for reimbursement with us. But we've had a lot of interest from various people within our system, and we look forward to continuing that program moving forward. So I did want to just say the Miro Foundation so much. Yes, this is Asia Landry, Isadora, Harley, and Nina, who couldn't join us this evening. So thank you. And that about wraps that piece up.
All right, well, thank you so much, Ms. Schneider, for that fantastic news and wonderful presentation. And I just, on behalf of the board, and I'll open the floor up for questions, but I want to thank Ms. Rita Gue, Floyd Gue, Bill Haynes, and Chris Haynes from the Miro Foundation for this incredible investment, once again, in our district, investing in our people and really helping to grow our teacher cohort. You all have done so much for the school system, whether it's through the fine arts programs and helping to support all of the plays. Right now, the Mississippi River Delta Institute that's happening with professional development for our teachers. You all have done so much for our school system, our students, our community. So thank you so much. Can I just open the floor for any questions or comments from the board?
Let me just, you know, add a couple of things. For the community out there, and I know that, you know, Ms. Schneider did a wonderful job in this presentation, but the teacher shortage in our country is acute, just like many, many other professions. We're finding out that the traditional university pathway is not filling the needs for anyone, not only within St. Bernard Parish or the state of Louisiana, but nationally. And there are many reasons for that. Some things having to do with compensation, respect for teachers, just a myriad of issues that seems to be contributing to many people not choosing to come into the teaching profession. So I remember when I first started, and for years, we never had to really struggle to staff our schools. Well, now, we're in the same situation most other school districts are in. It is a struggle to staff our schools and staff them well. We have less of a problem at the elementary level, but a significant problem at the middle and high school level, especially in the more technical content areas of mathematics and science, and then throughout in special education. So we could just choose to sit back and do nothing, which is not the MO that we have as school leaders and policymakers here in St. Bernard. So we had to look at, I guess, a multi-layered approach of how do we get more people in and more qualified people? And as Alex, you know, we remember when we started our Teach St. Bernard program, which has been so effective over the last several years. And those are for people who wish to change professions, already have their college degrees. And as she so eloquently outlined, they have to prove to us first they know the content area. And that is the purpose of the praxis content exams. So if they can show their knowledge of the content area, our Teach St. Bernard program then brings them in and teaches them how to be teachers, talking about the instructional strategies, how to differentiate instruction, all the things that a good teacher really needs to know. But we have to first begin working with someone who knows the content that they're teaching. So after they have completed their college program and can prove to us they know the content, then we can take them in. All right, that still didn't satisfy the tremendous need that we have. So we began to explore these other options. And the first one that Alex talked about was our high school program. And I was at Bessie all day today. And we just approved today the Educator Pathway that we're partnering with Nunez Community College, where our high school kids now, who are interested in becoming teachers, they can take some dual enrollment classes and get college credit while they're at the high school, college credit through Nunez, taking their first courses that they need. And then they're going to get the field experiences that Ms. Schneider talked about, where they're creating lessons, where they are actually doing field experiences within our elementary and middle schools to let them see, this is what it's like in a classroom. Do you really like this? Do you think you're going to be good at it? Do you think that there's something you want to do? And then by the time they're exiting high school, then they're going to be well on their way to achieving their four-year degree when they go through to complete their educational study and then hopefully come back to us. We brought them down to the Moreyall Center two weeks ago for the Teacher Leader Summit, so they could go to some of those workshops with teachers from around the state. So we are really trying to build that Grow Your Own program, starting at the high school level, and then being able to offer them the college credit that they need to begin. And they can bypass when they go on to college next year or the year after. So then we looked at, we have a wealth of experience within our para-educator crew here, many of them who are in classes every day with students, who are assisting teachers, who are performing many of the functions side-by-side with our regular teachers. And if they just, by some reason, did not decide to take the four-year college pathway prior to coming to work for us, this then gives them the opportunity to do so while they're working with us, so they can complete some field experiences during the day while they're at work with us and then take those rigorous courses at night, I feel for you. We know what it's like to sit there till 11 o'clock, go home, and then try to study and do what you need to get your degree. And in order for us to do that, we had to have a partner and some financial support. And who are the first people we always turn to? When we need something in our school system and we can really articulate the need, we turn to Rita and Floyd and Chris and Bill and say, can you help us with this? And they can see the need, they can see the people it's helping, and then ultimately help our students. So we can then provide these educational opportunities for our paras who are working with us now, to help them further their education and help us because they will help our children grow and learn. And in exchange, they make a commitment to us to stay with us for a couple of years once they get their degree. And then we place them in the classroom, and they'll be the lead teacher at some point with a group of our children. So it's helping our community in that respect. It's helping our kids and our school system. And we've got probably our greatest partner here with us in that initiative. And the young man that Alex spoke about, who had a little difficulty passing that secondary math praxis, which is nationwide the most difficult one to pass because of the breadth of the mathematical knowledge. That was a young man who graduated from our high school, went up to a college up north, made a very, very high ACT score, but hadn't really focused in on math and needed a little brushing up to be able to go over the calculus and pre-calculus concepts that are on that test, as well as your algebra and geometry and what you think of the more basic level. So being able to access that program, which then is an individualized program as they take them along, was extremely beneficial for him, and it's going to translate to an extreme benefit for us. So working through these four initiatives are our account, to not just sit back and say, oh, God, what are we going to do? But to be proactive and, I guess, look at the resources within our own community and see how can then, how can we make sure that staffing our schools will not continue to be such a struggle? So I want to thank you, Rita and Floyd and Bill and Chris. And thank you, ladies, as well, for stepping up to be our first candidates to go through this program and then hopefully attain your college degree, pass all your praxis exams, and get your certification through us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boche. Mr. England?
Yeah, thank you. On behalf of the board, we just want to thank the Miro Foundation for their support for public education, because that's where it starts, and this is what builds a community, this puts the village together. And we all realize that, you know, as we grow in this parish. We had a great presentation, thank you, Ms. Schneider, on that. But I had the opportunity, this past spring, we went out west, and I was out west. And they had this, like Ms. Boche was saying, they had the same problems we got here. They can't find teachers. And this was on television out there major, big time. And they paid good salaries out there, you know? So, and what I like about what the Miro Foundation's doing, what the school system's doing, is even if you take a secretary that might want to teach but don't have the opportunity to go back. But the Miro Foundation has given that opportunity, and I applaud you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. England. Any other questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. Thank you again, Miro Foundation. Anyone from the board want to make a comment or anything? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to give you the opportunity to say a few words if you'd like.
I just want to say thank you to all of you because we're a team. And you know what? We, I personally and my family, we are so proud of the public school system here. And Ms. Boche, you know how my aunt was about education. What did she ask you? Let me know if you need something.
I know. She told me many years ago, whatever you need, come to me.
That's right. And so we don't know the needs until you come to us. And Alex, she was amazing that day explaining everything. And it's to all of our benefits to have good, quality teachers that will stay to teach our beautiful children. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for being the best community partner. So just come and ask us if you need something.
The Miro Foundation is the best. Thank you all again.
And I just want to mention, too, with everything that, you know, Catherine talked about, the financing, probably the biggest investment in our children is that Miro Scholarship Program that is well over, what, we're talking 4,000 times 30 kids, how many kids every year? 60 kids. Times four, so like a quarter of a million dollars each year they're investing in our high school graduates, many of whom then come back to this community. So that is a significant, not just financial investment, but that support that goes along with it through their colleges is tremendous. So I don't know what we'd do without it, to be honest.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you again to the Miro Foundation. Thank you. Thank you.
Can we get our pictures of these three?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, why don't we, why don't we take?
Calling, need your back to order. This Lamar.
Thank you, Mr. England. Agenda item number 3.2 is the Emergency Operations Plan Update. And here to present on that is Ms. Snyder. Again, welcome back.
Hello.
She's our special guest.
Yes. A assortment of random things. But this one was one that was very close and near and dear to my heart. So Ms. Boche had asked to update the board on our efforts around our emergency operations plan. We do have the LSU Stevenson Disaster Management Institute coming to speak with you all again once this process is done at the end of July. But I did want, you know, with the recent events that have occurred throughout the nation, to give you all an update on what has been occurring within our school system along the front of emergency operations plans and, and hopefully give our community a little peace of mind. And so, um, so this is the project Deliverables. So for many of you who were with us five, four or five years ago, know that we had partnered with the LSU Stevenson Institute to do our active shooter plans. And those were some very intense and in-depth look at each of our school sites to determine if in fact there was a active shooter situation at any one of our campuses. How would all of the various, you know, authorities react? And so around that table, we had school district administrators, we had district staff, we had Sheriff Pullman's team and the fire department were also joining us. And so we had everyone at the table, John Ram, and we're able to really sit down and look at each of these plans and say, in the event this occurs, what is our next right thing to do? So that was a very specific lens to which we looked at our crisis management planning. And Ms. Boche, about a year ago, really wanted us to take a look at the entirety of our plan. You do have, and Ms. Angie is going to collect these from you at the end because you cannot keep them, but I did want to give you a sample of what they looked like. And so in front of you, you do have Goche Elementary's crisis plan that the LSU Institute has drafted for us. And so these are pretty extensive plans, they're about 150, 170 pages each. They incorporate the maps that we had invested in several years ago, but also look at updating the other components. And so just to give you some information around what has occurred this year, back in the fall, we had submitted, Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Dewey, along with Ms. Boche, had submitted all of our current crisis plans for an audit. And so the LSU Stevenson Institute took a look at all of the plans that we had in place. They audited those plans and were able to report back to us, you know, here's what needs to be updated, so on and so forth. We brought them on campus. I have taken the team to every school again, with the exception of Chalmette High School as our biggest school and going to be probably our most complicated school, we'll be doing that as a whole day in-person meeting in about a week. But every other school, they have come and visited the administration and really listened to their concerns and needs for their specific school campus. And so they did a data collection where they basically looked at the staff rosters and they took in all of this information. And then they were able to draft the plan and we're currently in between number five and six, which is they are submitting the first draft of the finalized plans. You're looking at Goche Elementary's. And then our school level people will be updating alongside them for final plans for this upcoming year. And then we will go ahead and have all of the necessarily people sign off. So the sheriff's department, fire department, EMS and so on. And so that's kind of the process that we've taken for the emergency planning. And so this got a little bit wonky when it got uploaded up here, but this gives you an idea of the process and it was pretty thorough. So the LSU Stevenson Institute, you will have an opportunity to meet them. They are all former military and so they bring that lens to the table. And so they began every day, every meeting, understanding what the principals felt like, was there immediate threats and the hazards that were on their school campus? And this could be things from environmental hazards, right? A pipeline might be nearby or the railroad tracks to environmental tornado or something along those lines. They assessed the risks, prioritized threats and hazards, and then came up with a plan. And one of the things that each of these plans is really going to have, I don't know why the whole thing uploaded, but this gives you a sense. So this is the outline for each of the plans. And so what you'll see here, right, is introduction and purpose through basic plan is going to be very school-specific, but our functioning annexes, these are our response procedures for various different threats, whether it's family reunification or lockdown procedure is going to be the same at Goche as it is at AJ, as it is at Chalmette High. And so that means that as staff who are, you know, either substitutes or they may be fluid or administrators have, we all know how to react to a crisis, the exact same way. This is how we do it, this is the next right thing to do, and it's very clear and cut. And so they went through this exact same process for each of our schools. So, nope, that's it. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of what will be in each of those. Alongside this, a couple of things that we're finalizing and working through would be new go-bags for each of our schools. And then the thing that I am most excited about is obviously our teachers cannot digest these crisis plans, nor would we want them to, right? So these are going to be kept by a very select few administrators and some central office staff to be able to assist at the time of a crisis. But our teachers will have a flip book. And so those flip books will be stationed in a, in the same space in every classroom. So if anyone was in there and they were to hear for a certain annex being called, they would know exactly where to flip and exactly what to do at that time. And so that will be a big relief to a lot of our principals and our school people that they at least know they have this very tangible thing that tells them exactly what to do in the event of a crisis. The other thing is that I wanted to share, and I'm sure Ms. Boche will speak about this a little bit further, but GoSep and the Louisiana Department of Education, based on the work that we have done with the LSU Stevenson Institute, will actually be using our plans as the model to move forward for the rest of the, the state of Louisiana and likely the nation for a good degree. So the LSU Stevenson Institute does a lot of national work. They've used these plans as a model. I've also, you know, after every major crisis, they have called me to kind of get my reaction. We've done walkthroughs numerous times, both at our reunification site and at, you know, various schools to determine if the protocols we have in place will suffice, given a wide range of, of emergencies and crises. So, you know, at no point, right, in an, in an event will anything be perfect or flawless. But I am confident that with the work that the LSU Stevenson Institute's doing and our school administrators, that everyone will know in the event of a crisis, the next right thing to do. And that next right thing is going to be sound, it's going to be research-based and it's going to be national best practice. And so they'll be joining us, like I mentioned, at the end of July to go through this in person with you all. But we did want to just provide an update on the work that's already occurred.
Oh, right. And just adding to that, it just so happened, you know, a few years ago, we had put together the original emergency and crisis plans and many of you remember that. And we had, you know, we have reunification areas and what, how do we do with transportation and heaven forbid, where law enforcement would put snipers? And it, there's a, a plan for every contingency. So last summer, I was talking with someone, I said, you know, it's really time to update these plans, to take a look at it again, but in light of the pandemic. My, my reason for reopening this primarily was because of COVID and what happens if we have, because we need a continuous improvement plan, a continuous performance plan for when these things occur. So in light of the pandemic, I wanted to wrap some of that into these plans as long as, as well as things like weather issues, environmental issues, active shooter issues. And lo and behold, you know, we're wrapping it up right now and then the horrific incident occurred in Texas. So I asked Alex just to do just a little brief report because I'm sure there are many members of the community who feel, well, what about our schools? Are they safe? What are we doing about it? And I wanted them to know that these exist and the full-blown presentation, it's going to be wrapped up in July when we're going to bring back the sheriff's department, the first responders, the fire department, Arcadia, ambulance, all, all of the different partners that we have, local OEP, and sign off on all of it so we all know what our responsibilities are and that that communication flows most effectively. And we will be back in July and the leaders of this group at the LSU Disaster, Stevenson Disaster Management Institute will be here to talk with you about it. And they were so excited about our doing this with them. As Alex mentioned, they brought it to GoSep and they're using many of the templates they're providing to do the same thing or suggest the same thing for schools throughout the state and possibly beyond. So I think we're going to be on the forefront of some of the more advanced emergency and crisis plans. They're even talking about apps for the teachers. I don't want to steal their thunder too much, but with, say, teacher cell phones, if something occurs, how immediately something goes to them. So if they are in classrooms with kids, that communication is there instantly with them and it's all pre-planned. And there'll be rosters, our current rosters will be in the system. So then we know who, what kids to account for. So there's a lot of moving parts to this. And this is just part of a written document that is tot- not totally complete for you. But they spent a lot of time this year with our school principal and staff, walking the buildings again, making sure everything is up to date, talking with the people within our parish who are going to be helping us with this. And just this past week, we were going to finalize these plans. All this was in the works before, like I said, that horrific incident in Texas occurred. But the timing for us, I guess, I hate to use the phrase couldn't be better, but it's very, I guess, you know, on point. And I just wanted the people in the community to know that these plans exist and that all the agencies within this parish are working together. And we have the experts in with those military backgrounds to help us develop these plans in a national form. So that was the reason for the brief presentation tonight, but with the more extensive one come July, at the July meeting.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Ms. Boche. Ms. Dye, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder, for this presentation and your prior one also. Great job. It's a shame that we, we have to have such a plan, but we do live in this day and age where Ms. Boche said, you know, horrific events have occurred. And I know we talked about emergency plans and we've had some, you know, always had an emergency plan, but this is a lot more in-depth with, you know, all the, the maps of the school and, and the classrooms and all. So it's, it's great that it's so in-depth. And, you know, it's good to be proactive that we've been working on updating this plan. And so I'm, I'm interested in having LSU Institute be with us. And as far as, I have a question, as far as after our plans are in place at each of the schools, will have in-service with our teachers for this, this plan, correct? Every year?
Yep. Yeah, so there will be a schedule of drills that's, you know, in part by the legislature has dictated how many of those you'll have, but also LSU Stevenson Institute has a series of drills that the schools will do. They'll have, you know, we'll have record of when those drills occurred, those flip books will be given. We'll also have some parent support so that parents know, you know, in the event of an emergency, here's what to do, here's your reunification site, here's what this looks like. So we'll have some parent documentation as well at the end of July.
Well, great. Okay, well, thank you so much for your presentation. And I do believe it's going to, seeing these plans, you know, that they're in place and that we work, you know, going to update each and every one of the schools and, you know, make sure the teachers and everyone's aware of them. I think it's going to be some, some comfort of the parents in our community that, you know, we are aware that, you know, unfortunately, these things occur and we're trying to be proactive with it and take steps to, so that everyone's ready in case any of this would ever happen, God forbid. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dye. Sorry, any other questions? Sean, there?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Snyder and, and any administration also. It seems like every meeting I have to get up here and just say how proud I am of this administration for the innovation. And I think if, if my memory serves me, we were the first school system to work with the Stevenson Institute. And, you know, here we are, we setting the tone for the rest of the nation. Did I hear that correctly? They're going to use our program, what we have.
That's what they're telling us, that we'll be doing, and broaden it.
The non-bite we're going to go with.
We'll go with the state right now.
And the same thing with the teacher recognition pipeline, you know, the, the program that's going on at Mero Elementary, the, with the artistic camp. You know, there's so many programs, and that goes back decades, right, Ms. Boche? I mean, this isn't, this is, the school system has been, been doing this and doing it for many, many years. And I just, you know, I just want to really just congratulate the administration. You know, you mentioned, you know, a contin- your continuous, you continuously working your plan and updating and fine tuning. And that is just so important and it's just, you know, can we, can, emergency operation, could that be more? You know, what's going on in the world today, what's happening in school system, and we're on top of that, you know? So just thank you for that. And, you know, the community at large needs to know that we're doing everything we can for our students. So thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Any other questions or comments from board members? Oh, Mr. Wong?
Well, well said, Mr. Warner. And we shouldn't be surprised, I think Ms. Boche and her administration has always kept us ahead of the curve on, on a lot of issues. And I also give my compliments to the administration for, for being ahead of the curve and, and keep, and just keeping, keeping us informed and the community informed, which is very important. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Any other questions or comments? That will move to agenda item number four, personnel.
Yeah, Ms. Boche?
Well, first of all, we have the regular changes, the hirings and, you know, resignations and movements of our teachers as we continue to staff our schools. And so those are before you. But also we have two appointments that I wanted to make you aware of. Since Ms. Pritchard had been named our personnel director, our personnel supervisor, we had advertised for the principalship at Trist Middle School. And we're happy tonight to offer an appoint, Kara Colburn, who is the current assistant principal, to be the new principal at Trist Middle School. She's been with our school system for 27 years. She goes all the way back to the old Sebastian Roy School, Mr. Campbell, where she taught at that middle school level there and then moved to Saint Pen Arth High School as a teacher. Then went to the Unified School around Katrina time and stayed at Chalmette High School. And she was really well versed in inter-curriculum, which is her forte. So in 2008, she was appointed the master teacher at Trist Middle School to help and support and train teachers, then was named the assistant principal in 2019, and now will become the principal at Trist Middle School. So she's had a very long career with us and served in many different capacities at different levels. So I think she's going to do an excellent job. So I'd like to congratulate Ms. Colburn as the new Principal of Trist Middle School. And then we had a retirement, Ms. Mary Lou Hay, who had taken care of all of our data for many of our special programs, meaning our federal and state programs. And what I did was, when I looked at replacing her, I wanted to take an issue that I think that has, that we have a problem with within our parish, and that deals with truancy among our children. And we've seen an increase in truancy, especially after and during COVID. And we still, I don't think, have sufficiently recovered in having kids there every day. And it become, it's becoming an issue not only within our school district but around the state as well. And I have worked with, and Mr. Powell has worked with District Attorney Perry Nakosha in developing a program that this person will also oversee in working with getting the parents to send their children to school every day, especially at the elementary and middle school level, where it's more we feel a parent problem. And then as they become teenagers, this sort of shifts a little bit to a student problem, which takes a little bit different approach. But if we are having very young kids not attending school, we're going to work through all of the issues that we currently have with our counselors and the support services in school to get the kids here. But if all else fails, we are, they're partnering with the DA's office to potentially bring some legal action to more strongly encourage the parents to make sure their kids are attending school each and every day. So I'm taking that truancy piece and coupling it with this for this particular job, which will be a year-round job. And with the applicants, we are going to appoint Andrea Luchardi, who is currently the Principal of Andrew Jackson Middle School, to that position. She's been with us for 23 years. She began as a math teacher at Chelmond High in 1999. She taught at the Unified School, of course, immediately after Katrina. And then in 2010, she was the Assistant Principal, appointed Assistant Principal at Andrew Jackson. So she dealt primarily with discipline issues and truancy issues as well. And then became the Principal of AJ in 2018. So she has the technical skills in her, her math and technical skills to do the data that we need, as well as the practical skills in helping to deal with this truancy issue. So I just want to congratulate Andrea Luchardi, and she'll be assuming that role shortly. And it looks like we're going to be advertising for a principalship at Andrew Jackson.
It's like dominoes.
It's a domino effect. So congratulations, Andrea.
On behalf of the board, I would just want to again congratulate Ms. Colburn and Ms. Luchardi. I know they do a fine job, well-deserved. Ms. Dyson.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. And I want to personally congratulate Ms. Cara Colburn and Andrea Luchardi. Cara's been an integral part of our school system for many years, and she's done a great job at Trist. And I know she's well-respected and is going to do a great job in her new position and as school principal. And she knows that school very well, and she's going to do awesome. And Andrea Luchardi, she's going to be a wonderful coordinator. She's just a, you know, she's been an integral part of our system also and has done an excellent job in Andrew Jackson. And I know that they will miss her there as principal. And, you know, she's a real people person, too. And it seems like she just had a great handle on her host, on her school, too. And, but congratulations to Andrea, too. She's going, she's going to do a great job. Fabulous. Thank you very much.
Good choices, Ms. Boche.
Great choice.
Okay, move on to item number five, insurance committee, Ms. Jackson.
All right, next up we have item 5.1, renewal of excess workers' compensation insurance. And we have Mr. Clements and Mr. Dinesh. Good evening, guys.
Good evening. Okay, then we're here with our good friend, Mr. Richard Clements.
How smart that was. I don't know about this.
Okay. Our friend. Okay, we all.
Trying to wake up for last one.
Right. Renewing excess insurance policy. As you know, our district is self-insured for workers' compensation. However, we do have an excess policy, which kicks in when expenses on any particular claim reach a certain level. And you're required by the state to have that in place as a buffer, as a kind of a safety net for a self-insured workers' compensation plan. So we get this excess insurance every day. You see the results, you see the quote that we're recommending in your packet. It also has an exhibit which shows what our premiums would have lasted three years for 2022, 2023. The quote that we're recommending is $79,935. It has gone up a little bit from last year, but these policies are based on salaries. And every year, since our salaries have gone up in the last year, since we've had pay raises last year, district and state pay raises, total salaries have gone up. So the fact that they apply, I think, is close to the same. It's just it's on a greater base. So our premium has gone up about $9,000. So we're recommending the policy through Star Insurance Company with a premium of $79,935. We did contact some other companies to solicit quotes, but this was the best premium that we were able to get. And Mr. Clements, I'm sure will answer any questions you might have. But that's our recommendation.
So just out of curiosity, what did the other quotes look like? Were they not even close? And that's why they're not.
One of them was actually in the neighborhood, but it was a higher retention. So our deductible, per se, would have been much higher, 10% higher. And then the other one said, we need $100,000. You know, come talk to us when your numbers get that high. And that's how the market is. We went to a number of brokers, and they would send back and say, hey, you got the best deal that's on the market. So that was really at least good news, that we have the best program that's out there possible, that we have had now for a number of years.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Egan.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Jackson.
David, how many people, do we have anybody on the working comp right now?
We have a few people that are on.
How long have they been on?
Uh, I don't think we have too many. There's some that have been, that have been injured and have been out for a little bit of a while. I don't think we've had anybody currently on that's been on for an extremely low period of time. But we have people that have accidents at work, go out for short periods of time. We have a couple that have been out for an extended period of time because they had more serious injuries. But it's not a great number of people. I'd say maybe five or four, five people that are out on indemnity right now.
Because I know in the past that we worked with an attorney and that, you know, to get them to pay them off.
Well, every now and then, if it's a longer-term one.
But that's true.
Yeah. We won't pay them off, we'll settle for future payments. If it's going to be a longer-term claim and it's going to go into the future, we can negotiate a settlement for our current settlement rather than paying it out for the next 15 years of medical benefits. So, yeah, we have, we have done that in the past.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Anybody else? Any other questions? No? I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that we. That we support the administration, and we send it to the full board for approval for renewal of excess worker compensation.
I'll second.
Everybody vote your machine.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item is the Finance Committee. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. 6.1 is request to advertise for monthly produce solicitations. Mr. Morell, how are you today?
I am well. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. So yes, I'm here to request permission to advertise for fresh foods and vegetables for the children for the upcoming school year and the period from August 1st, 2022 through January, I'm sorry, July 31st, 2023, for school board.
So any questions?
Those are monthly bids. On the second page is all the dates for every month. So month by month, we put those bids out.
So, do we have any questions? Joe?
Quick question. Mr. Morell, these companies will actually give you a proposal that covers the entire year?
No, so what we do is we put the bids out month by month.
Oh, okay.
And they just give us a 30-day bid. So this is just to accomplish the entire year. And then because the price of fruits and vegetables fluctuates so much.
Right.
It's pretty drastic. And so that's what we do on a monthly basis.
Okay, every 30 days, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Dyson, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
To request the monthly produce solicitations bid on a monthly basis. And I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many usually produce vendors do we have that did?
We have three companies that we put it out to, and we typically have one, maybe two, that we get a response back from. It's mainly just one.
Mainly just one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? A little motion by Mrs. Dyson, seconded by Mr. White. Everybody vote your machine.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you, Mr. Morell.
Thank you.
Item 6.2 is request to approve bid tabulations for official journal. Mr. Fernandez.
Okay, Mr. Warner, in your package, you have tabulation for providing official journal services for the next fiscal year for the school system. I know this helps everybody in suspense every year. But we're going to recommend the St. Bernard Voice for official journal for the school system for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Any questions from any board members?
I'll move to accept the recommendation.
Okay, no questions. We have a motion by Mr. Wong, seconded by Mr. Campbell. All in favor? Please vote your machine.
Motion passes 11-0.
All right. We'll move on to item 6.3, request to approve bid tabulations for painting and body repairs.
Okay, again, this is for painting and minor body repairs for our school buses and vehicles. We put this out every year to local entities, and we had one responded this year. The other one, who usually responds, wasn't in a position this year to put in a bid. So we are recommending that we accept the quote from Car Craft for the next fiscal year.
Any questions from any board members?
How does this compare to last year's bid?
Uh, it's in the range, it's about, it's comparable to what we did last year. It's in the same range.
Is there an increase from last year?
Maybe a little bit, a couple of dollars, not much.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Do we have any idea why no one else bids on this?
That was my question.
Well, there's two main companies that can handle our business in the parish. And they usually both bid. It goes back and forth between the two, as you know, every year, you know, it'll go back and forth. I understand there were some issues with, not, not business issues, but other issues that they decided not to put in a quote. That business had handled for the past two years. So I guess they declined a bid this year for the, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Reasons I don't want to go into.
Okay.
And this is the kind of thing, too, that the potential bidder needs to have a large enough shop to store big buses, needs to have the capacity to work on large vehicles, I guess you could say, and the ability to turn them around quickly. And like Mr. Fernandez said, I think there's only maybe two vendors in the parish who has the capacity to do it. And one decided for their own reasons that they were not going to submit a bid this year. Has nothing to do with anything here, though. It's our knowledge.
Any other questions?
Just a motion that we accept the bid.
Have a motion, Sheldon, seconded by Mrs. Dyson. All in favor? Vote your machine.
Motion passes 11-0.
All right, we'll go to item 6.4, request to approve bid tabulations for gas, diesel, and other automotive fluids.
That's a touchy subject.
Well, gasoline, diesel, and lubricant. We heard two bidders on various items, and we're recommending a little bit on each item.
Any questions from any board members? As Mr. Fernandez mentioned, we're going with the lowest bid on all the items.
I'll make the motion that we go to the Senate and the full board for the recommendation.
I'll second it.
Any other, no questions? All right. We have a motion by Mr. Egan, seconded by Ms. Jackson.
No. Oh, okay, she did.
That's okay. All in favor? I mean, I'm sorry. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
All right, we'll go to item 6.5, request to approve bid tabulation for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies.
Okay, as Mr. Warner said, the tabulation is attached. I just want to bring your attention to a couple of things on this bid. There were, there was one bidder whose bid did not contain all of the elements that are required to submit a bid, so we had to, by law, disqualify their bid. So they weren't considered in the order of it. The second thing I want to bring to your attention is for three items on page two, number CL 115, on page four, CL 136 and CL 137. There were some bidders who bid items that did not meet specifications, so we did not consider those individual items on those, those. But otherwise, we recommend the lowest responsive bidder on each item for paper and custodial supplies, paper cleaning and custodial supplies.
Take a minute to review the bid. Interesting, Mr. Fernandez, looks like Home Depot?
Yeah.
They made, they put in a bid for an item, huh?
They have, yeah. They've been bidding the last couple of years.
Interesting. Oh, we have any questions for any board members? Mr. Egan?
Yeah, for hairnets.
That's for.
No, it doesn't apply. Really, hairnets?
Yeah.
Canary workers.
In the cafeterias, they're required to wear hairnets. We can bring you a sample if you'd like.
So I have a motion, Sheldon, and I need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dyson. All, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay, and item 6.6, request to approve bid tabulation for bus parts.
Okay, including tabulation for bus parts, we're recommending a little bit on each item, on each class of items. This one we bid by class of item, so a little bit on each class of items.
Any questions from any board members?
Did you say low bid on every item?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a recommendation. I sent to the board for, for recommendation.
All right, second. We have a recommendation by Mr. England, seconded by Mr. Wong. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
All right, back to you, Mr. England.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Uh, item number seven, superintendent's notice. Ms. Boche?
Um, just to, to talk about how well all of our summer programs are going, the, um, camp at Marrow, the crew autism camp at Marrow, it was, from what I understand, a really fantastic week, a good program for our kids. We have the summer science camp at, uh, the MoMA Center going strong. All of our summer skills programs on multiple sites this year. We expanded that and offered it to more of our kids this year than were eligible last year, and got a tremendously good response. So, those are moving well. And the Performing Arts Academy, um, we have that elementary choir program going on. And we are going to be, the play this year for the Summer Performing Arts Academy is Anastasia. So, that will be at the end of this month, and everyone is looking forward to that. So, I would hope that everyone, um, would try to check that one out and attend. The Sound of Music that they put on in the spring was phenomenal. And I'm sure they're gonna follow it up with a play of comparable quality, and I know they will, of Anastasia this summer. So, we're really excited about that. Uh, and I do wanna make note at the Bessie meeting, and I talked a, a little bit about it when we talked about the educator pathway, um, Aileen LaBoff, who is our CTE coordinator, has been doing extraordinary work and had helped put together additional pathways for our students. And they were submitted today for approval. So, our partnership with NUNAS, expanding some associate degree programs and dual enrollment opportunities and CTE courses, uh, is just increasing day by day. Um, and while we're very excited about it, it's gonna require a tremendous amount of support for our students and our families. But the outcome is tremendous with the amount of, uh, college credit that they will earn and/or industry-based credentials and certifications. So, we're really excited about that. And we have moved forward with the approval of at least four, five additional programs that we just got approved today with that educator pathway being one of them. So, we're really excited. So, I think, you know, when I, when I look in what Mr. Warner had mentioned, when I look at our school system and see the work of our people to provide opportunities for kids, it's just phenomenal, the amount of work that they are doing and we are doing to make sure that they're working within an environment that allows them to create these opportunities for our kids. Uh, and they're in many, many different areas, whether they're the performing arts, whether they're athletics, whether, whether they're more academic, whether they're more career and technical in nature. We're trying to do and increase programs for all of our kids, whatever their interests are. And I'm just truly blessed to be part of a school system, a board, and an administration, and a teaching corps, and support staff that is able to work tirelessly like this and provide these opportunities for our children. So, just wanted to make that statement. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, gentlemen?
Move with your turn.
First, and seconded by Mr. Egan. All, everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls, just being to join.